He'll come back. All right, we're good. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the 2017 Griffin Awards for Historic Preservation. And Jack Thompson, thank you for being with us.
Thanks for being patient. Thanks for the self-chairs. Thank you Chairman Numan, County Commissioners. My name is Jack Thompson and I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Society of Asheville and Buncombe County. Honored to come to you tonight to let you know that May is Preservation Month. And on May 25th, we had our Griffin Awards Program over at the Historic Masonic Temple in downtown Asheville. And we are honored to inform Buncombe County that y'all have won an award for your stewardship for number 205 College Street, also known as the Smith and Carrier Building. This is where your Register of Deeds is housed, sandwiched right between a relatively new construction for the Court Center, an elegant building for a new one, and a modernist construction on the other side. A little bit of history, 1920 Albert Heath Carrier decided that his architecture business was going well enough that he should purchase an investment property in downtown Asheville. For the previous 15 years Carrier had teamed up with Richard Sharp Smith, one of Asheville's most prolific and influential architects. Smith and Carrier were at the height of their careers when they decided to build a new office for themselves at 205 College Street. Now, let's fast forward to 1994. The county chose to purchase this historically significant building in the heart of the historic district of downtown Asheville. And over the past 23 years, the county has made significant repairs and breathed new life into the Carrier Building, while the environments around it changed dramatically. The Buncombe County Register of Deeds is now the careful steward of this historic place, and its history is celebrated in photography throughout the building. The Preservation Society is honored to award Buncombe County a Griffin Award for Historic Preservation for the good stewardship of the Smith and Carrier Office Buildings. Briefly, I have two more awards that I want to talk to you about because they fall under y'all's umbrella. A little bit of overlap here. Out in Sandy mush, the Farm Heritage Trail was created in 2016 as a collaborative effort between Sandy mush resident and farmer Terry Wells and Ariel Ziff of the Buncombe County Soil and Conservation District. The purpose of the farm trail commemorates preservation of agricultural land and lifeways. It creates public access to farms and goods. It educates visitors about agriculture, land conservation, and rural lifeways. And it celebrates the rural landscape and supports cultural tourism in a remote corner of Buncombe County. The Farm Heritage Trail was awarded a Griffin in the education category this year. I've also noticed that the Sandy mush Community Center has a line item on your budget, hopefully for consideration that you may be a good steward of that historic property as well, out in our little piece of heaven in the county. There's an often published statement that, quote unquote, "Asheville was all boarded up in the 1980s." This was a misconception that the North Carolina Collection at PACT Memorial Public Library wanted to dispel by taking a close look at just exactly what was going on at that time. When did Asheville's Renaissance begin? This six-part series that attracted over 1,000 people was also awarded a Griffin Award in the education category for 2017. And I know Drew, our Register of Deeds, very well, and I'm certain that he's going to be very proud to have this hanging in 205 College Street. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. And I would, for folks who haven't been over to the new Register of Deeds, I'd just encourage folks to go over there. It really is, it's a beautiful historic building. And it's been, the reutilization of it as our new Register of Deeds has been done beautifully. I know that a lot of the folks in the Register of Deeds were very nervous when they were going to relocate. But it's turned out terrific. And I really want to commend Dr. Green and her staff and the architects who worked on it and everyone who had a role in it, and of course, our Register of Deeds as well, in working together. So it's a great project and it's a beautiful asset for Buncombe County. And thank you for the recognition. We really appreciate it. All right. Next up on the agenda is an update from the Energy Innovation Task Force. We are not planning to have any vote on this this evening, but we'll have an update from the task force. And Sam Rourke will be presenting along with some assists from Jason Walls and Brad Rouse, who are other active members on the task force. And Sam, thank you for being with us. And I know that you've got a presentation too, and I think that'll magically appear on the screen in the next few moments.
There's some magic. All right, great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening. My name is Sam Barkeistis. I'm the Executive Director for the WNC Green Building Council. And I'm a resident with my family in Candler, in the Upper Humne Valley area. And I'm also a member of the Energy Innovation Task Force. And there's been so much time and energy put into this effort over the past year that I hope I do it justice tonight in providing this update and recommendations to you. Just a brief overview, the EITF, as we call it, was formed in April 2016 as a collaboration between the City of Asheville, Buncombe County, and Duke Energy. There was a joint resolution to establish this EITF. It has two goals. The long-term goal is to transition the Duke Energy Progress West region to a cleaner, affordable, and smarter energy future rooted in community engagement and collaboration that is mutually beneficial to the community and Duke Energy. We also have a short-term goal, which is avoid or delay the construction of 190 megawatt natural gas peaker plant planned for 2023. To achieve these goals, the EITF is creating a plan of prioritized strategies that members of the greater community, Duke Energy, and the City of Asheville, Buncombe County should undertake to increase the adoption of energy efficiency and clean energy in the region. So there's four convening entities. The City of Asheville and Buncombe County play the roles of serving as conduits to the community stakeholders, contribute to the solution development implementation of those, and close collaboration with the community, and support community outreach and education. The role of Duke Energy is to provide data and conduct analysis to create baseline and annual targets, support the analytical research needs for work groups, contribute to the solution development and implementation and collaboration with the community, and also support the community education outreach and marketing. We have a nonprofit partner called Rocky Mountain Institute. They are the entity that is leading the design, the facilitation of the overall process for the group. They're also supporting us with analytical and research needs and with strategy integration, too. So the EITF has a potential to be a national model for other communities and utilities. It's really, it's a unique thing that's happening right now. It's a partnership like no other, really, in the country where the utility and local government and community and business partners are coming together to look at how do we essentially delay and avoid the need for a power plant? This is kind of a unique thing where a utility actually asks the community for this support. And we're also looking at how do we create innovative, clean energy solutions to meet the area's growing energy needs? So it offers a unique opportunity to create locally targeted clean energy strategies in collaboration with utility, to catalyze the community to reach a tangible goal. Because as you heard tonight, there's a lot of engaged, passionate people in this community that want to work on this. So we're working on with them. And to explore cost-effective win-win strategies and business models that align the customer, the developer, and the utility. Here on your screen is a representative from the EITF. There's a lot of brilliant, passionate people in here. There's been thousands of hours that have been dedicated to this effort so far. I personally have put in over 150 hours on this. And also related to this, we have about 15 people that are on the EITF, but there's also about 40 to 50 people that come to each meeting as well. And we have subcommittees that focus on various issues, too. So there's a ton of people engaged in this process. And we've been able to collect a lot of their knowledge and information and passion in order to develop these recommendations we're presenting to you tonight. On progress to date, so I'm going to turn it over now to Jason Walls with Duke Energy to talk about Duke Energy's commitments and what they've been able to formulate as part of this process.
Thanks, Sam. And I'm Jason Walls, the District Manager with Duke Energy Progress. And I'm going to go through these really quickly. One of the most significant work streams that the company has done to date is we're looking at how we're going to meet and honor our commitments to install at least 15 megawatts of solar energy here in the region, as well as at least five megawatts of battery storage technology. We are getting really close to identifying some of our initial sites for that battery storage technology that will likely exceed some of those early figures that we talked about with at least five megawatts. So it's going to be a little bit more than that. And so in the coming weeks and months, we hope to be in a position where we can share really some specifics on where some of those will be located in the region. The idea is some of that is, that investment will allow us to kind of push that power plant out a few years, even as we're getting started and we're working on this work. A couple of other things that we're working on, we're working to support the program's working group with greater alignment with our internal energy efficiency and demand-side management team, as well as we are, we have engaged the services of the Shelton Group, which is a national leading marketing and brand firm that focuses just on energy sustainability and the environment space, to help us figure out how we connect with our communities to drive energy efficient behaviors. But most importantly, we have renewed our commitment by putting an executive-level person in charge of just the Western Carolinas' modernization work, which the Energy Innovation Task Force encompasses. Many of you will remember a name, Robert Sykes. Robert was the Regional Vice President in charge of all company operations here for a number of years. His passion and dedication to Asheville is unmatched in our company. And it's real exciting. He's been here for the last couple of years as our General Manager in charge of our poles and wires operation and our distribution operations, as well as the Western Carolinas' modernization work. But now he is solely devoted in the Vice President of the Western Carolinas' modernization effort. And we're real excited that we have that type of leader to really align and bring people together inside of the company to support this important work.
Great, thank you, Jason. Okay, so now we're going to go through the recommendations that the Energy Innovation Task Force has come up with. Just want to let you know that these recommendations have been vetted and talked about for a long time. There's also, the city is looking at these recommendations as well as part of their budget process. And then these recommendations are also going to be supported by the community collaborative entities like nonprofits and business leaders that are part of the Energy Innovation Task Force. So the first one we have is for clean energy improvements for community organizations. So there's many nonprofit organizations, such as homeless service providers, childcare facilities, and affordable housing entities, and churches and volunteer fire districts that have their own facilities that we'd like to support. Some of these organizations are folks that have contracts with the county, and they will be prioritized during the pilot phase. The funds would be primarily, but not exclusively focused on energy efficiency upgrades that have a five-year or less payback for those projects. And the good thing is by reducing utility costs, community organizations become more financially self-sufficient, and they become less dependent on taxpayer funding or other outside donors. So this is a real investment in their facilities and helping them reduce their energy cost. The second recommendation we have is to support expanded weatherization for low-income households. So high utility costs hurt low-income families the most. Helping low-income families improve the efficiency of their homes helps them save money while also achieving clean energy goals. And there's volunteer-based efforts, such as the Energy Savers Network, make a difference. And these models can really be scaled up to help more families and to achieve the broader energy goals. And I just want to turn it over to Brad Rouse with Energy Savers Network just for a few minutes to talk about their program and how they're helping low-income families.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. So we've heard a lot tonight about helping the poor, and we've heard a lot about people heavily involved in doing that. And we've also heard a lot of concern from the audience about the climate and the climate crisis. And I want to say that low-income energy efficiency, especially the volunteer-based program, like where we're trying to get started with Energy Savers Network, is a way to do both of those with the same dollar. So you kill two birds with one stone. You help the poor, you help the goals of the EITF, and you help the energy efficiency and the climate. The volunteer program, I think, makes a whole lot of sense. It just has so many values. I mean, we have a tremendous, as you can see, a tremendous volunteer sort of spirit in the community. Between Manna and Habitat, you have over 120,000 hours a year of volunteer effort focused on this problem of helping lower-income people. And with, you know, we're proposing a way to leverage that, a way to spring that. And so the funding would allow us to sort of build into that. So far, everything that I've been doing now, working on 40 homes this year in Buncombe County, is completely volunteer and completely donor-based. And so we can't really get it at scale without more support than what we've got. But the need, you know, the numbers of this are very profound. You know, we look at efforts with, when you're just looking at the cost of supplies, even a one-year payback, if you cost it out, the volunteer work, maybe a three-year payback or two-year payback in terms of impact. And then those benefits keep going to the people that we serve for year after year after year. But it's not just the money, it's not just the numbers, it's the people. And, you know, so far, I mean, it's really, there's just a huge need. I mean, working with a woman tomorrow in Asheville, who in her house, there's a number of problems we're going to try to work on, but the front door is falling off. And so that's an energy efficiency problem as well as a door problem. We worked in a mobile home in Arden not too long ago. And the resident there, a senior person, she was a widow, she didn't know how her heat pump worked. And so the way she had it set, it was on emergency heat way too much. And so we helped coach her on how to solve that problem. There was an older man in Asheville, African-American man in Asheville that we worked with earlier on this year. And his heat duct was disconnected from his heating system in the basement at one critical point. And we were able to patch that together just using do-it-yourself volunteer labor. So we identified that problem and we fixed it. It didn't cost much, but we had to be there, we had to have the organization, and we had to see it. There was a man out in Sandy mush that called us, called ABCCM, and they referred him to us. And he had a $900 utility bill, and he was going to try to get that paid for by one of these charities. But, you know, he didn't know why he had it. We went out and we figured out the problem. And we recommended that he talk to some community action to really fix that problem of the $900 heating bill for two months, for two months in the winter. And it wasn't even that cold in the winter. And, you know, we worked with a woman, Emma, a couple of weeks ago, a single mom, a child at home. And she had some friends that moved the dryer from one place to another. And we did a lot on her house. We fixed windows, we insulated part of the attic. We did a lot of work there. But, you know, she, her friends had moved her dryer to a different part of the room. And then we said, well, let's find the dryer vent. And we looked around and found two dryer vents. And so we said, well, which one is the real one and which one is not the real one? Then we realized that behind a little board, there was a hole in the wall from the old dryer vent, which is a source of energy infiltration. And so we repaired that for her. And that's the kind of thing that with a low-income program, volunteer-based, that we can do. And so I just wanted to share some of that with the members and say, I think we've got some good proposals here.
Thanks, Brad. Yeah, there's, you know, many families in this community that receive federal dollars through the state and through the county to help with home heating assistance. And many of those dollars are paid. And then, you know, if they're not energy-efficient homes, then basically that money leaks right out their windows. Number three is to encourage greater use of energy efficiency practices in new construction. You know, we're rapidly growing as a county. And we, you know, we cannot mandate utilization of green building practices strongly than North County Building Code here, but we can encourage them. And so we're requesting the county should offer incentives and permitting processes for more energy efficiency in construction and help educate the building community about not only Duke Energy's financial incentives, but also other community types of programs that could help residents be able to solve their problems. And the fourth recommendation is to explore expanded energy efficiency renewable options for public facilities. The EITF supports your efforts to encourage energy efficiency improvements for facilities and also the proposed solar farm on the retired county landfill. And in recognition of the increasingly cost-effective renewable technologies, we also encourage the county to explore expanded installations of renewable energy systems on public properties and facilities, including schools and throughout the community. And how do we pay for this? Well, we have a suggestion to create a Buncombe County Clean Energy Fund to provide resources to advance these energy goals and basically to avoid the need for a power plant and to transition Buncombe County to a clean energy future. The fund will basically leverage utility incentives that are available and provide energy audits for local businesses and organizations, and then help do the energy efficiency improvements for low-income families and community organizations. And it also could, this fund could also be used for researching models for expanded energy efficiency renewable energy in Buncombe County as well. Here are the budget recommendations that we have. The volunteer-based low-income residential weatherization program, about $35,000 for that. We would also be hoping to get funds from other sources as well to leverage that money. There's a request for $50,000 to support RMI and their facilitation efforts. The city's also chipping in that much money to support this process. We're not asking for any money right now for community engagement, but that's based on the recommendations of the Shelton Group. $25,000 to encourage green building through the permit process. This also includes education for the community and staff. Community energy audits, $50,000 to pay for the cost of the audits to the community organizations. And then the Clean Energy Fund will be $400,000. And then this is really the bulk of the money to help pay for these energy efficiency improvements for low-income families and for community organizations. And it would also help to, you know, support the staff for residential low-income programs like community action opportunities and research additional energy efficiency renewable energy opportunities for Buncombe County as well. With this, basically, this is an investment in the economy and in the community and in the environment. These, the money that you'll spend will multiply manyfold to help support these organizations and these families, and also to help delay and avoid that peaker plant that we so desperately need to do. So that is pretty much our recommendations, and we greatly appreciate this opportunity to speak with you today.
Great, thanks, Sam, and Jason, and Brad. So thanks for the update. And any questions at this time? We've got a lot of other presentations on budget-related matters that the county manager will present later, but any questions at this time?
Thank you so much for all the incredible work and the presentation. Were the priority areas that you listed ranked in order of, or have you all ranked the priorities?
We haven't ranked the priorities, no.
Okay.
These are just essentially all recommendations that we feel are necessary to meet all our goals.
Okay.
Can you bring the previous slide back up?
I'm not sure.
Maybe not, but that's okay if you can't bring it up. So my question is similar to Commissioner Flora's question. You know, my concerns are reaching those who are struggling. I share the vision of those that are out there that are struggling with their heating and power bills. Not 100% sure that this is the answer. It could be part of it. I know that Duke Power over years, and I don't know what, you know, you do now, but it has had assistance programs for people upgrading the heat pumps and such as that. And that need is, that need is great. There needs to be more research, in my opinion, associated with that part. It can return a lot of money personally to the families that are having $400 power bills and $500 power bills and $600 power bills in homes that are 1,100 square feet or less. And that would be my challenge. And there's a lot of homes like that in Buncombe County. Some are older, stick-built, some are, you know, older manufactured homes. Both have, that $400 a month, you cut it to 100 with a new heat pump or something like that, which can be done, you're talking about a major, major impact. Again, I'm not sure that this is the way to go about it, but that's where the need is great. For me, you know, we approved and I supported the LED lights in the schools. I think it was a great thing to do, it was part of the solution. If that school had a horrible problem with its power bill and, you know, the source of its heating and the windows and so on, it would have been not a wise decision for me to load it up with LED lights if I didn't address those other things. So that's kind of where my mind is going with the people that live out in Sandy mush and some of the other places that may be, and everywhere across the county, not just there. I said that because you mentioned them. But that is putting a lot of strain on the power systems in some smaller homes. So that's kind of where my thought went when I looked at your list and where my priorities, you know, might be. And I would challenge you to look at that, and that needs to be part of the solution, I think.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Go ahead.
Okay. I look at this in two different forms. We have tons of people in the county right now, including the county, that are helping people with their properties to get them up to try to help with energy. Duke Power brought this forward and set up a task force to try to help with a plant. Now we're talking about half a million dollars of the taxpayers' money. Well, how am I going to tell the taxpayer that's in my age, or maybe a little older, that lives in a home that goes down here to the tax office after we have to go up under property tax to cover this for whoever you want to cover it for, or to think you want to cover it for? Because you don't have a plan, you just have an idea. And they're having to make payments under property tax. 2,500 of them are. I see the Sierra Club's got 5,000 people, as she says, part of the Sierra Club. Well, to come up with that kind of money, you just need $100 from each one of them. So this ought to be, it's not the county's responsibility to back up Duke Energy. Duke Energy has a project that they thought about doing, and they asked a few people to come into it. That's good. I think it's very well. But I don't think that we should be the ones that's the culprit that has to stand up, the city and the county, for something that we don't know if it's going to work or not work. We're all sitting under lights right now. If it wasn't for gas and coal right now, we wouldn't be sitting under lights. And we're not going to be sitting under lights if you think it's all going to be solar energies or batteries or whatever. Batteries in cars go bad, it costs money to get rid of them. Solar panels are going to go bad sooner or later, and it's going to cost a ton of money to get rid of them. Power plants are going to go bad, and it's going to cost a ton of money to get rid of them. So me personally, I think you need to go back and research what y'all would like to do as a group of people, not as coming to us and telling us what we need to do. We're up here to supposedly lead, we're not up here to supposedly follow. And I look at seven people up there that need to be leading. And I don't need to be following any group of any sort. I work for 253,000 people in this county, and there's definitely not that many people in this room. But I'm working for the ones that physically cannot afford to pay their property tax all the time. They've been here all their life, we keep going up on them. And as I said, there's over 2,500 elderly people that are having to go in the tax office and make payments on their property tax, and their homes are paid for. So I'm totally against this, thank you.
Let's make one brief comment. So I appreciate you guys being here. You know, of course, I've been representing the county on the board as well. And I just would just reiterate that this is, a part of the reason I wanted some other folks to update tonight is because I kind of feel like you guys kind of hear me talking about this stuff all the time and are probably sick of hearing it from me. So, but as we hear from these folks and some of the other people who are with us tonight, there's really strong support in the community for, I think, making this, trying to make a difference in this area. And I think part of what I like about the recommendations that have emerged that are being recommended back to the county is that they're making recommendations to us to try to address some things that we're really already involved in. You know, we heard from a lot of great organizations tonight about their organizations and programs and things they're doing. All these different organizations, they all work out of some building somewhere. And they all have to pay a power bill every month. And they get direct taxpayer funding from us to carry out their mission. So, you know, just like the LED project in the schools, you know, great environmental project, great carbon footprint project, but it's going to save the county school system a million dollars a year. You know, and has a three-and-a-half-year payback. I mean, so we'd be financially foolish to not take advantage of the I mean, so we'd be financially foolish to not take advantage of those kind of opportunities on our own public buildings, but for these other organizations that are receiving direct taxpayer funding, you know, we'd also be foolish not to help them lower their utility costs, just like we are with the schools, because then they're going to be more financially self-sufficient, less reliant on us. And, and you know, in this community, in terms of the low-income folks and their homes, we spend $2 million a year of taxpayer money to provide heating assistance to poor people in Buncombe County, mostly in the wintertime, so that they don't literally freeze during the coldest days of winter. And because we believe people should not be miserable just because they're poor. It's true, most of that money is, it is mostly state and federal funding that passes through us, but it's still taxpayer money nonetheless. So in the same way, I think there's, there's really strong financial arguments for us trying to make a difference here, as well as great opportunities on the clean energy goals. So thank you guys for the update, that's all I've got for now.
Yeah, I'd just like to chime in and beyond expressing my appreciation, pick up on some of, you said, Brownie, I'm very supportive of this and appreciative of the task force recommendations. I think the challenge that I and my colleagues face is balancing this with other pressing priorities and a tax rate that we're trying to keep as low as we can. But it's, it's very exciting to see this list of priorities enumerated and to see the vision behind it. And I'm ex, I, I am fully supportive of us moving forward with this plan and figuring out a timeline around which we could do that, given some of the budgetary constraints we have. But just applaud what y'all are doing and the vision behind it and the compassion. And, you know, in addition to the financial arguments for this, I think, I know, as a person of the faith community, I know there's incredible strong support from faith communities across Buncombe County to be engaging on these issues. And just appreciate what y'all are doing, thanks.
I too support what you're doing, but I'd like to ask a question. Do organizations like HelpMate and other organizations who are working to help people with, well, not HelpMate, Habitat, I'm sorry, who work to help with, you know, repair houses and to make them energy efficient, are they represented at the table on this task force?
There are nonprofits, Habitat hasn't been participating at the task force, and we have had conversation with them to try to get them to start doing energy efficiency upgrades, because that's not really their focus so much. And, but they have, you know, we have been in conversation with them and Mountain Housing Opportunities as well. Community Action Opportunities is the main nonprofit entity that does a lot of the, you know, work in the community, and they are on the task force. And we have also had meetings with like Eblin Charities and other groups that have a direct connection with families that need support. And there's a long list of families that need, you know, need this kind of support that we already know that are waiting for it. And we have been inviting and basically touching base with as many nonprofits as possible that are in service to the community.
So let me, let me chime back in real quick on the, again, I want to challenge the, your, the goal question is, and prioritization is a, is a really, really big deal. There's a lot of, you mentioned Eblin, there's, there's a lot of people like Eblin and others that, you make a phone call to them, you know, and they're going to try to make sure that person's heat's taken care of. And so there's going to need to be a lot of thought around, around this.
Right. Yep, and there's a lot of great models that already exist in the country, and I've worked on other energy efficiency programs, so we kind of know what the model can be, we just have to need the resources and the time and energy to make it happen.
Yeah, and I would also just, just add, you know, I really encourage them, we have a lot on the agenda tonight, we've got to keep this pretty focused. These, the programs working group of this task force has done an incredible amount of research. They could, they could give us a two-hour version of what we've just heard. This is not the, this is not the product of it, this is a, this is a very high-level overview of much more detailed analysis and kind of program ideas that they've, they've done some great work on.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they've done their work, but we have one person sitting in this room back here, his name's Greg Israel. He's been working for a long time on the county, making sure that we save energy and help the carbon footprint and bringing it down. And he, you know, why are we trying to tell the county more of what they need to do when people come in here from, I was on the board here, and I think he might have been Brownie, when people had basically, they've against it, people came in here from Charlotte to tell us how we can save stuff, energy. And they told them, they learned from him. So, you know, we don't need a whole parcel of people telling us what we need to do. I have a house that's 27 years old and it's energy efficient. It was a long time ago and it still is today. Still got the same heat pumps in it. And when you have a light bill that's under $300, I think you're doing pretty good. And it's 3,800 square feet with three heat pumps. So it goes back to the same thing. We are in here trying to decide that we put a little task force together that's supposedly going to be able to do something, but we're not sure exactly because nobody knows the true effort of it. It is, we can save, we can save lights but turn them off. That's no big deal. But I can't see the county, as, as we have to go forward tonight with the budget, getting ready for next week, how we're going to be able to accomplish what we're trying to do here and be able to do that too for the people. We've got to work for the people. We don't, you know, there may be a few people in county that like it, sure. I like it, but that don't mean that I have to say that, okay, I'm in love with it. That's, that's the facts, Mr. Newman, the facts are.
We'll take like it.
People here, people, people here know how to save energy. And we don't need to tell our people in the county what they need to do, especially working here that saved many years.
Mr. Presley, give a comment.
Yeah, I just want to echo Commissioner Belcher there. Is, I think it's great, but we, and for the last two weeks, this budget has been very, very tough. And with tax increase and we're trying to work on it, I, I've got to agree that right now, I think we need to put it on hold right now and investigate it more.
Mr. Frost, are you with us?
Hey, we got you. Turn her, hang on.
Hold on, let me turn you on. Now, you on.
Oh, great. I couldn't quite hear, is there a list of prioritization with this so that the first priority, or, you know, maybe it wouldn't have to be done, you know, could be done in two years instead of one year? I'm just trying to think of, I didn't hear the answer to that question.
Yeah, they, there's a presentation that we just, they just walked through, Ellen, so that'll, and that'll be on the county's website, so we can, you can look at that, and there's a list of, the breakout of the, the funding. And, and Sam mentioned earlier, there's not a specific, like, it's not ranked from top priority to lowest priority, it's just, these are, these are the recommendations. So that's, that's where we're at, that's what's been presented tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I just didn't, when Jasmine asked that question, I didn't hear the answer, but I saw the breakout. Yeah, that was good. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, no problem.
And I know it's late, but, you know, my, and so my suggestions is that that prioritization be very clear and more detailed than what we had, what we saw tonight, so. That would be very helpful as we try to look at this and, and make, you know, good, clear decisions, so. I'm done.
All right, thanks everyone for your comments, thanks for being here tonight, guys. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the zoning ordinance text amendments, and Debbie Trumpy will present the amendment.
The very patient Debbie Trump.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the proposed amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance that you're hearing tonight are to encourage conservation subdivisions, to add standards for impound lots and tow yards, and to correct a reference to general statutes. Specifically, the following changes are proposed. Definitions for conservation development subdivision and motor vehicles impoundment lot or tow yard are added, and the definition of junkyard is amended to exclude impoundment lots. The statutory vested rights provision section is revised just to correct a reference to North Carolina general statute. The permitted use table is modified to add conservation development subdivisions and to add motor vehicle impoundment lots or tow yard. The dimensional requirements section is modified to add conservation development subdivisions to the type of development that are allowed, a reduction in minimum lot size and setbacks. The steep slope elevation overlay permitted use table is modified to add conservation development subdivisions. Steep slope elevation overlay district lot size standards are modified to allow the reduction of minimum lot size for conservation development subdivisions. And a new section titled uses by right subject to special requirements, motor vehicle impoundment lots or tow yards is established, is added to establish standards for impound lots and tow yards. It would require that motor vehicle, motor vehicle storage areas being closed by a security fence and then a row of buffer evergreen trees be planted on the outside of that fence. The planning department recommends approval of the proposed amendments as they are consistent with a comprehensive land use plan. The 2013 update recommends the establishment of land use regulations which allow for a flexible range of development options and the expansion of land use policies and regulations to adjust for changes in land use patterns and demands. The planning board held a public hearing on these proposed zoning ordinance amendments on April 17th of this year, and there was no public comment. The planning board found that the amendments are consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest, and recommends approval in a vote of seven, nine to zero. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me at this time.
All right. We need to do a public hearing on this, let's open the public hearing at 8:17. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed text amendment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 8:18. Are there any questions or a motion on the text amendment?
Make a motion that we approve and find that the request is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
I second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We got you.
All right. The next item is a public hearing on the land development subdivision ordinance, Chapter 70 amendments.
The proposed amendment to the text of the land development and subdivision ordinance is simply to ensure that hillside cluster development lots are adequate for a typical home and wastewater system. The following addition is proposed to the section on hillside development standards, cluster development. Cluster developments that utilize septic systems for wastewater treatment shall include, as part of their soils investigation report required by Section 7040, the conclusion that the amount of disturbance allowed on each individual lot is adequate for, at a minimum, a three-bedroom septic system in the construction of a 1,500 square foot single-family home. Planning board held a public hearing on this amendment on April 17th as well, and there was no public comment. And the planning board recommended approval in a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing on the proposed text amendment at 8:19. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Mr. Yelton?
Question for the board, and you won't answer, you can't, because it's a technical question, but I think you need to consider what I'm saying. As you pass these ordinances, I remember a long time ago, people talked about how that you were going to end up having to make decisions on individual lots. If somebody's not happy, what happens in the planning and zoning? So the bottom line is, are you going to do an overlay of your rules and regulations and that impact on property values? I think you need to think about what I'm saying, because when you start saying, okay, one house and it's got to be this size and so forth, you are impacting the value of that lot, especially if it's a community where all the houses are 1,500. So, you know, you're going to have to look at the neighboring lots and create an overlay on your taxes that will reflect that. And I would like to put that through to you as a suggestion for somebody on this board to push for that, because I think it's very, very important. Because I have a situation right now where Charter is refusing to even tell me what it would cost to run a cable line to my house. I can't get anybody at Charter. That's impacting the value of my rental house, because anybody today that wants to do high-speed internet work, and so these type of things, you're going to have to start considering your overlay for your taxes, okay? Just wanted to pass that along to you, and I'd like to have that recorded in the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing at 8:21. Is there, are there questions or a motion on the amendment?
Have a question, or just a comment. Could you just, for the record, explain what a cluster development is for the public, since it's in there?
Cluster development is where there are smaller lots so that more of the, the parent tract can be set aside as open space. So the intent of this is not to require everyone to have a 1,500 square foot home, but there are density bonuses for things like reduced disturbance on the, in the tract. So what we're doing is try to ensure that the developer, in his eagerness to get density bonuses, actually does provide a lot that's viable, and it could have a typical home with a three-bedroom wastewater treatment.
Okay, thanks.
All right, someone like, like to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion, since I have the language in front of me. I find that the, make a motion to approve, find that the request is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
Just motion and a second, further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ms. Trumpy.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the FY18 county budget, and I'll turn over to Dr. Wanda Green.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, want to just give a, a brief overview of where we are and where we started the process, but I want to take just a moment. I've had the privilege today of having lunch with the Fire Fighters Association and with management team this morning, and maybe it's just a reflective time, but I looked around the room and I really feel very blessed to be associated with such dedicated public servants, and I think our citizens are very fortunate that we have people who really want to serve them so well. And so for that, I'm very grateful. Just to revisit for a moment where we were in May, we brought you a budget of $419,289, which was a $7.2 million increase in the general fund budget. These are the May numbers, and we have continued to work on these, on these, this budget. It is a revale year. In 2017, we had a 60.4 cent tax rate, revenue neutral, calculates at 51.3 cents. The budget that I brought you was, was developed using a 55.9 cent tax rate. I will say, I've heard very clearly, we need to bring that rate on down, and we continue to work at doing that, and thank you for each of, each of you working with me as we've tried to do that. Just to visit, if you look at our revenues, the percentages on them are pretty consistent, with property tax being our largest revenue source, followed by intergovernmental revenue and sales tax. If you look at our spending plan, the, the larger expenditures are education, public safety and human services, those are, that's consistent from year to year, they are core services. The things that we do have included in the budget, we will be finishing our Cox Avenue facility and the parking deck there, have to pick up the debt service on that. We've got some state requirements related to NCFAST and retirement increases for our employee, and just utilities for our parking deck. We do have some cap, debt service or capital, no, we took that one out, excuse me. We are still, let me back this up a little bit, we are still looking at some expenses related to public safety, economic development, energy and court requests, and trying to determine what kind of changes we need to make in our budget. Our budget at this time will, will increase for some of those. We, we also received our requests from the city schools, county schools and AB Tech, and that represents requests that are up by six, a $7.2 million. We are working with those agencies and will be meeting with them to, to determine what we actually can do with our budget there. The other thing I would point out is we do set several tax rates, and that includes our fire districts and our city school tax. Most of those are asking to hold their rate, and if you look, they're very, and I think they have visited with most of you in your district. We do look forward to hearing from the public tonight to get their thoughts and their We do look forward to hearing from the public tonight, to get their thoughts and their advice and feedback on the budget as it was presented, and hopefully this helps them know there's still things we're having to consider. We will be back two weeks from tonight and have to adopt a budget. Several things that we do hope to have come to some kind of closure is the state budget. That'll help us look at our education budgets, and right now, there's, there's a few things happening, but we will wait for the House and the Senate to get together and come back with a budget that we can see how, take a really close look at how it impacts us. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and looking forward to hearing from the public.
All right, thank you very much. So why don't we, why don't we open the public hearing? There's been a lot of comments on the budget during the opening public comment, but I'm going to open the public hearing on the FY18 county budget. After we take any additional public comment, then we'll bring it back to the commission. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at eight twenty-seven. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment this evening? Yes, sir, please come up. And then, Mr. Yelton, did you raise your hand? Okay, you'll be next.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Commission, for your patience tonight, giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm Tracy Elliott. I live in beautiful Charlotte, and I'm the Executive Director of the Asheville Humane Society. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One is to thank you and your predecessors and the county staff for an amazing twenty-seven-year partnership between Asheville Humane Society and the Buncombe County Animal Shelter. I'm also here to ask that you take care that the proposal that we put in front of you, thank you very much for your open-minded reception of that proposal, is fully funded. We're not able to tell from the budget documents available to us whether or not that is the case. It appears that it is not, but we would hope that you would, would seek that answer for us. As you know, this partnership in the last twenty-seven years has achieved amazing things. We now save the lives of every single adoptable animal who comes into the county shelter. That goal was set by this commission in 2006, and we met the goal two years early. Another way to put that is our euthanasia rate for healthy and rehabilitatable animals in Buncombe County is zero. At an international conference in Toronto just last week, Asheville Humane Society and the Buncombe County Animal Shelter were named one of the top thirty of the five-thousand animal shelters in the United States. Just last week, also, the Executive Vice President of the ASPCA said that our community outreach program, which we talked to you about when we met with you, is one of the top five in the country. In 2016, we assisted nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty animals. Forty-one-hundred of those were in low-income families in low-income neighborhoods that we are working in, such as Emma and Deverview. Our first targeted neighborhood was Emma. We assisted over nine-hundred families in that neighborhood in the first twelve months. One of our strongest partners there is Jeremy Stowe, the Principal of Emma Elementary. He told us and said publicly at one of our events that the best moment a child of his or one of his students may have in his day, or her day, is when they go home and they greet their animal and get the unconditional love and the stable love that an animal provides in a family. We're very pleased to be doing that. These particular programs are funded by private funds, but we leverage every public dollar that we get from you by about two dollars and twenty cents. Plus, we also bring in one million dollar, one million dollars of labor equivalency cost that is donated by our huge volunteer force. We also supplement basic shelter services by about two-hundred-thousand dollars a year. As an example, we purchased a forty-thousand-dollar transport vehicle to have a thousand animals leave the shelter every year and go to northern shelters. We cannot continue to do this. We need our basic shelter services funded by you, if that is all possible. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration, and thank you for this partnership.
Thank you.
Well, I've got positive news for you all at this point in time. How about that? You can solve all the problems in the world. You can take care of all the energy problems, you can take care of all the animal control problems, you can take care of all of the problems of putting people to work, insulating houses, and everything, if you put the money behind it. The only problem is, where does that money come from? So I'd like to propose some solutions. I think there's some solutions that are unhidden. You know, they're hidden here, and you don't look at them. I've heard a lot tonight about coordination. I know this county has a contract with United Way for over a hundred-thousand dollars to refer people to where they can get help. Well, very obviously, based on what we have heard tonight, with all these help agencies giving help, United Way's doing a lousy job. You're getting a bad deal on your hundred thousand over there. Now, the other thing is, as you look at this, these nonprofits are supposed to be nonprofit. I can start a nonprofit if you'll give me enough money to fund it, and then I can pay me a salary out of it. So you are creating jobs when you do that, but that money comes from somebody else. So why don't you put these things under an umbrella? Look at it, and you can't do this this year, Brownie, it's going to be too hard, but look at putting them under an umbrella to where people in the county that's having a hard time paying their electric bill can go donate time and get some credit for it, if they're going to get two-hundred-thousand dollars in heat credit. How many of them can work in some of these agencies? And let them receive a reward for their effort. We all know you feel better when you work for it, rather than get it given to you. And the reason I say that is I ran an ad for somebody to do some work on my farm. Out of four people that I interviewed, three said, "You pay me under the table, and I'll work for you." And I laughed at it, and I said, "I'm already paying your thousand dollars a month food stamps and your rent subsidy. So no, I'm not going to let you get cash and pay you under the table, because I need the tax write-off too, because I'm trying to have affordable renting." And so, to keep my taxes down, I think you need to look creatively at some of these solutions that are outside the box, that you're not going to hear from the agencies that want the money, and you're not going to hear it from your staff. And because you're sitting up there, considering who you're going to hurt with each vote, you may not even think of them. So release those chains on your brain and figure out how you would do it if it was your four-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Rice? And you'll be next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members, Board. You ain't wore me out yet. We can still go till midnight if you like. Well, your budget's increased ten percent a year for the last ten years. Got to repeat it. Sometimes it's old and can't remember, so I'm going to repeat it. That's a lot of money. Budget jumped from twenty-four million in two years. I believe the twenty-four million jump was an intentional effect on the tax rate for the upcoming 2017 reevaluation. I believe this board should unanimously make sure that you preserve the integrity and the taxpayer money and vote unanimously. I can't even say that. All of you's in, okay? For a fifty-cent tax rate, go down if you have to, even more. I believe there was an inflated appeal loss added into the budget. Just remind you, Commissioners, there's twelve million dollars sitting over to the school board in a fund balance that you have control of, and you ought to take priority in it, using it for the tax rate. If the kids are leaving Buncombe County School, my God, get the money and use it for us taxpayers. You have a seventy-five-million-dollar fund balance? Now, keep, keep adding these numbers I'm giving you. We're having a hearing today on the 2018 budget. It's amazing, we ain't got all the budget yet. I don't know what comments I might be able to make after you give me all of it. I thought you told me, Brownie, that you was going to let me get all that, when you got it. You ain't got it yet. We're having a public hearing today. The taxpayers need some relief. Did you hear that? Now, we've heard a lot of gimme, gimme, gimme. We hear it every word, every year. But I'm going to give you an old song to remember as we leave here tonight. She got the gold mine, and I got the shaft. Did you hear that? You just sang that old song, and you'll understand what it means when you get screwed. The taxpayers just got screwed if you don't vote unanimously to bring it down to fifty cent. I'm not taking that back. You need to listen to it. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come up, please.
Hi, my name is Roy Harrison. A few minutes ago, a few, maybe an hour ago, I was honored as a senior champion, and I think I've followed those two fellows before. And they've been around a while, but what I'm here to, to, and I don't know all the budget numbers that you're talking about tonight, but I do have a concern. And the concern I have is that I'm retired, having worked forty-some years in engineering and technician-type jobs here, and thirty of them, thirty-four of them here in Buncombe County. I may be one of the few people that paid a mortgage off. But now, as it comes before me now, and I'm like, okay, am I going to stay in Buncombe County? That is one of the questions I'm starting to ask myself. One of them is, can I afford to stay in Buncombe County? As I look at the rest of my career, if I say this is one-third of my career, you know, two-thirds is gone, and the next third is, and so now, I'm walking and I'm listening. I decided I was going to leave after the award, but then I said, "You better stay around. They're going to be talking about your life, and how you're going to be affected, and how it all affects me." I love Buncombe County. Been here all these years, raised a family. They both, my two children went through the public school system and Asheville City School, and in turn, they're now on to their careers in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and Charlotte, North Carolina. But now, they, they call me, and they're starting to wonder, are you going to stay there, Daddy, or are you going to leave? And so, these budget considerations you all during the night, they have a great effect on me personally, and they have an effect on people of my age, and they have an effect on people of color, and people, everybody, they have an effect. So, as we go forward, I guess I'm going to be watching it a lot better now. And I apologize for not being here for the last five years to see what was going on. I appreciate your service over the years, and I appreciate everybody that has come before you to spell out their hearts, because that's what they're doing. I know there's a lot of requests for money, but what I am so much requesting from you is equality of life. That's what I'm looking for, as I continue to be in Buncombe County and the city of Asheville. Help me with maintaining equality of life, so that I could, maybe one day. Oh, by the way, the blanket that I have back there, I'm trying to decide now whether to put it on the right side of the hide-county blanket or the left side. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Well done. All right. Anybody else who'd like to speak during the hearing? All right. We'll close the public hearing on the budget at eight forty, and I'll bring it back for discussion at the commission. We're not going to vote on the budget tonight, that's what we're going to do in two weeks from tonight, but are there any, any questions or for the county manager at this time?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one. Could you explain the, the fund balance, the fund balance that was mentioned, the seventy-five-million-dollar fund balance? Explain the appropriated fund balance. I think the only thing we have to go by right now is at fifty-five-point-nine. And then, what, how much fifteen percent is, because I think that's the recommendation, correct? If you could elaborate on that a little bit?
Tim, do you mind if I ask you to, to explain this, what's the available out of the seventy-some million?
Yeah, so the, so, yes, there is like, I think, seventy-three million dollars of fund balance, but a large portion of that is actually restricted for other obligations. And so, what is available, what we consider the available fund balance for that fifteen percent, is actually, I think, fifty-three million dollars. And that is, what we have is considered assigned, committed, and unassigned. And so, that is what we consider as our reserves, which by the LGC requires, or would like us to have, eight percent, but by the board policy, you set the policy at fifteen percent, and it is currently at seventeen-point-four percent.
And the fund balance that we have appropriated is, in this budget that we have before you at fifty-five-nine, is twelve-point-five million dollars.
So I guess my question is, of fifteen percent, what is that, what is that dollar number?
Yeah, so the fifteen percent is fifteen percent of the, of the budget, of the actuals from the prior year.
Give me a dollar, approximately.
Fifteen percent would be about forty-nine million?
Forty-nine million is what we have to have.
By your policy, yes, you need to keep that much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions?
Yeah, I've got one. We talked about it in the planning session. When will we get a copy of the total budget, so that we'll have time to review it before we look, uh, vote on it?
The day after the budget message, the first Tuesday in May, we placed that on your dashboard. If you need some help accessing that, we can help you access that tomorrow, and it's all the line items in all the departments, and we're happy to help you access that, if it's on your dashboard.
Now, will it be on there after we make the final cut, so to speak? After we decide on the nonprofits? That's what I mean, everything. It will be on the dashboard?
Yes, sir. We'll have to make adjustments to what's there, because what we brought in is what was recommended, and we, we've continued to have a lot of discussions about line items, but yes, it...
When do we plan to have the final budget there? That's my question.
Well, I, I need a little more time with each of you to come up with a tax rate that's tolerable for everybody and still meets the need and protects the fund balance and looks, looks forward, at least to two to three budgets. So we, but also, we'll tell you, we have to post the budget next Tuesday. So we are at, at the end of our, our timeframe by Monday.
That's what I was saying.
Ms. Green?
Yes, sir.
When will we have the total budget ordinance? Somehow, we missed it last year.
The budget ordinance gets posted next Tuesday, which will be on the web on Wednesday.
This, which Wednesday?
Wednesday of next week.
Okay. And we had a discussion on the gun range. I'm in the computer, and I'm still a little lost there, far as we're buying things with money that was produced to the gun range. And how did, how did this proceed to happen?
When you borrow money, you tell the bond, the people who buy your bonds, how you will use that money. So you use it for the purpose, and should, so in that particular case, it's a public safety purpose. Should you have any money left, there's only two things you can do with money left over. Use it for a like-public safety purpose, or use it to pay the debt. When we started this budget process, we needed two million dollars for ambulances, and we were able to repurpose that to buy what was left, to buy your ambulances. We replace those every four years. If you, if you choose to use it for debt service instead, we would just change that in the budget, so the, so that you'd see ambulances and a lowering of debt service. There's not another option to do that with. I mean, you can't, if you save money, you can only use it for those two purposes.
But it wasn't brought before us to talk about these ambulances or vehicles that, and that amount of money that was talked about, that, that we spent. That's where, you know, I got lost in the picture, you know? You try to figure stuff out, and it takes a little while, and I'm not that smart, and I know you got time that you have to spend on stuff, but being surprised that we buy X amount of ambulances, and it was a pretty big number. And, you know, any way you want to look at it, and two point, over two million dollars and a million-eight-hundred thousand in ambulances alone at one time. And I don't know of any county commissioner that knew that this was happening.
We have historically replaced our ambulances every four years. We have historically replaced our ambulances every four years. There's a long track record of that. I'm sorry if we, if we didn't give you all the detail you needed in that budget amendment, but we, you know, we go out for bed every four years. We try to save money where we can, but ambulances get to end of life, and...
Well, I, I just heard that it was put out on a thing that we basically used to money, and it was on April the twenty-seventh of this year. And I thought we had a, a deal that our county manager would work with us and tell us what was going on, and after X amount of dollars, she had to come before us to be able to spend this money.
Actually, it, it was a budget ordinance. I'll pull that out and show it to you if it's, and, and we did talk about putting amounts above a certain level on new business as opposed to old business. I'll have to go back and look at the ordinance, at the budget ordinance, but that would be my mistake if it didn't show up on new business, but it would have been in consent.
I've never seen it on anything. I'm sorry. It wasn't in, on all the two lists that I had for a budget period. I've, I've never seen that. That's the one thing, I'm just disappointed that, you know, it's, it's hard to find stuff, and then when you find it, it's, it's a little disappointing. I apologize for being that way, but you have done a great job. And I know we all sometimes do things, including myself, that we have to look back at. But as, as who we are, as the commission, seven of us, we shouldn't know exactly what's happening when there's that kind of dollar spent, period. You know, it's, it's not just ambulances, it's, it's vehicles. We do have vehicles tied into this budget for the sheriff's office, but you have vehicles tied into that, too, so, you know, or that's what you said. So it's, it's basically, you know, I don't know how we're doubling down on vehicles, but it's hard to realize that something that come in is reasonable as the gun range that we owe as much as we do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions from commissioners? Go for it.
Dr. Green, appreciate twenty years.
Thank you.
I only got to spend six months with you so far, and it's been great.
Thank you.
But I like Jerry Rice's fifty cent thing. I just wish we could get there. And I know you wish we could.
I wish we could, too.
And you show so much passionate, and here you are leaving, but you're still very concerned with what's going on. I know most of the commissioners know, my big concern is what we're going to do with the elderly people. You know, when they was making three dollars an hour, and now it seems like twelve dollars an hour. And a lot of them own their property, but they don't actually own it because they're making payments every year. And some of them are paying more than what they paid for that property in the thirties and forties. So, you know, that's it. But I think one thing that can help us all, as me and you talked a little bit, if you could explain that we're trying to get it where we can get it down closer to revenue neutral. We're not going to get there. Well, I hope we do, but you're not, you, I think you mentioned, you're not concerned with two thousand and eighteen as much, and here you are going to be gone of what two thousand and nineteen can bring.
We, I, that is how I feel. I think that when you look at two thousand and eighteen, I, I don't believe we can lower it to, to revenue neutral. I just don't see a way we can get there and fund all the requests that we have that are a lot related around core services. We are continuing to look at places where we can reduce our expenditures, and y'all are instrumental in helping us get there. And we will, we'll continue to look at those numbers. In some of our conversations, one of the things that's a challenge, especially with our elderly population, there is an elderly exemption on property tax if your income is below, I think it's twenty-nine thousand dollars. I do think there's a good opportunity that we could go work with the General Assembly to get them to raise that level. Now, it raises it across the entire state, and, and we have to, because property taxes treated equal across the state of North Carolina. But I think if we took our, like, our average median income, or took a look at something that's much closer to what it takes to live here, and went to the General Assembly and said, can we raise the elderly exemption income limit to, whether it's thirty-four, thirty-five, or whatever it is, it would start to help a lot of people and give them that property tax exemption. So, it's, it's, have not seen any action on it, although we have made the inquiry about it in this long session, but I do think it's something we can go back and talk to them about in short session, because it is a budgetary impact item, and I believe that we, we could have that discussion with them and see what we could get, get them to do, which would help our elderly population a lot. Does that answer your question?
Excuse me, one second. On that, I think the veterans already get more than the people that's on Social Security.
They do.
You know, I'm a vet now, I'm on Social Security. But the fact is, I think the people, just like the gentleman spoke in the back, you know, you retire, and he wants to stay here. That's, that's, that's basically what I'm saying. I want people to be able to, too. So if we can talk them into forty-nine, fifty thousand dollars to get it close to the veteran side, then people can afford to stay here.
And that's a good, a really good point of reference to start with. If we're doing, I want to say it's forty-five for vets, and I'm not positive about that, but if we took it and said, can we do that for people who are, right now it's sixty-five and older, I mean, that would be a good starting point. We will need involvement, your involvement with the General Assembly, our local delegation, to have that discussion with them. And we're happy to put the research together and show them some options, but I do think it's time to take a look. When it started, it was like a twenty-five thousand. It's been a lot of years ago. The, the growth factor on that's very small, so we're really only at like twenty-nine thousand now. And I believe it's been eight or ten years since we got that exemption. But happy to put that together, so we can talk to the local delegation.
And I appreciate you being involved in that conversation, which has already started, you know, with, at the senate level and some, some other things. This puts us in a, you know, we've, you know, we have new commissioners, and, you know, being here a fifth year does not make this any easier. There are those that have come here tonight that are passionate about certain things, and you should be. Doesn't necessarily mean that those things will be funded at the level or within the time that they're requested, because the need is great, but the requests are just year after year increasing, multiplying. It's, it's amazing. I think that comes from the public's willingness to serve and to help and to be involved, and so they reach out in their community, and then they, when we open the door each year for community grants and other things, they reach out to us, too. So, I get that, that's part of it. I think as commissioners, we have to make the difficult decision and say where we are comfortable at with the tax rate, which the easy answer is the lowest possible tax rate that we can get. But in order to, you know, to challenge the department heads or Dr. Green, we have to say, you know, if I'm comfortable in the fifty-three-ish range, you know, because maybe we can't get to fifty, or fifty-one with the, with the mandates and with, with other things that, that have to be done. And when the, when the public safety comes in here and requests additional funds to, to do their best to keep our children and grandchildren safe, I mean, how do you, you have to, you have to very carefully and cautiously examine those numbers, because that's a, that's very near and dear to everybody's heart in here, making sure that your kids are safe, your grandkids are safe, and everybody's taken care of. When poor communities, whether they be in, in Candler or Lester, or whether they be in Shallow, or wherever they are, when those community people come in here and passionately ask for their families and their friends, we have to listen to that. We may not be able to fund all of that. We have to recognize the need, and, and hopefully, within our departments, we go there first and challenge them to do a really, really good job and improve that, those areas, and help more people there. And then you go to the people that are working outside of, you know, the county services, HHS and wherever, and try to help them. This is a difficult, the easy thing for us to set up here is if the tax rate comes in too high for me, I may say no. Just vote against it. That's easy. That's easy. Hard thing to do is to challenge each other in conversations and say, that's why I ask about fund balance. What's a safe amount for us to be able to bring it down as low as possible? And we're discussing that and looking at that and challenging each other with that, so. So that's all, you know, that's really all I've got to say tonight. I'm, I'm grateful to all the people that come in. We're going to have additional time to, to, to thank Dr. Green, and I've done that privately myself, and just a wonderful job in the time that I've been able to be here to confide in her and others, and, and be helpful in, in making these decisions. And I, I appreciate everybody that's come here tonight and said things, those that work for the county, those that don't work for the county, you know, Jerry Rice, others. People come in here very passionately and open their hearts up to us, and that's a really big deal. And, and we were talking, we were talking out back that we, usually when it's budget message, there's not a whole lot of people come in. It, it's blown my mind. You know, we're in here talking about a four-hundred million dollar budget, and not many people show up. And people showed up and showed out tonight, you know, and, and, and giving us advice, and I, I appreciate that. And I think I'll hush.
Okay. All right.
Is it late?
No, it's early.
It's not late.
All right. Other comments or questions at this time? All right, I'll just make a couple. Thank you to Dr. Green and all the staff who work on our budget. I, I guess I would just, I would just say that I share Commissioner Belcher's comments. We've got some, we've got some, and the other comments as well that have been made. We've got some very tough decisions to make over the next two weeks. We want to support the core services of the county. We want to support the core priorities that we hear from the community. We all have to run for office, and we hear people talk about things that they want the county to make a difference in. And so, and there's things that we can do to make a difference. So we want to, we want to address them. We do have a lot of, a lot of great partners, a lot of great community organizations that we work with that, that make a huge impact. We need to make decisions on, on that. Public safety is always going to be a priority, and, and we're going to be focused on that. The, the proposal from the school system, of course, that's always going to be, you know, receiving our highest consideration as well. So we've got, but we do want to lower the tax rate. I think, where I think we're, I think there's, all seven members agree that we would like to lower the tax rate below the fifty-five point nine rate that was proposed in the, in the earlier drafts of the budget. The question is, how much more can we go while still doing the things we want to do? And I think we got to think about not just this year, but we really need to think about the next several years. And I think we, because really, just twelve months is just sort of almost like a snapshot for the county. We need to, we need to look into the future, and I think we should, we should try to set a tax rate that is as low as we can go, but which is sustainable, which is going to preserve Buncombe County's AAA credit rating, which is, which is not a given. You know, there's not many communities around the state that have that, and it, it doesn't just sound good. It saves taxpayers a lot of money when we, when we do these capital projects. So we, I think we've got to, we've got to protect the AAA credit rating. And, and I would say, I, I would agree, I don't think getting to revenue neutral is probably realistic in this cycle, as much as I would love for us to do that. I think the, you know, the, I mean, the new, the new Health and Human Services building on Cox Avenue alone, I mean, that's a forty-seven million dollar project that this body approved. And that, that project alone is four point seven, four point seven million dollars of annual debt service we need to make. That project alone makes getting to revenue neutral, you know, probably not realistic. But I think we do have room to lower this, and I think we're all going to have to make some concessions on some of the issues we care about. I will be prepared to do that on some of the projects and areas that I've advocated for in the budget. And so anyway, those are a few of my thoughts, and, and I'm sure we'll get to a good place at the end of the process. So, thank you to everyone who's come out tonight to share your views and, and participate in this really important decision for how to use taxpayers' your, your money. Anything else before we move on?
Just to echo the thanks we've heard about the passion people have shared and sharing your time at the end of a long, busy day, and just sort of want to put out some of the sort of guide stars for me in making this decision. The driver will be knowing that there are people in our community who are hurting right now, and there's areas where we have to act. And also knowing that there are places where if we act, we can make a real difference and help people live into their full potential. And balancing that with needing to be as vigilant as we can about lowering the tax rate, knowing that that has a real impact on people, especially folks living on limited incomes, folks who are elderly and retired, but that we have to, we can't be, we, we can't do that in a way that's reckless when we think about next year and the year after that and the year after that. So, there's no formula for how to thread the needle on those priorities, but I'm very appreciative of the dialogue happening between the seven of us and county staff and Dr. Green's leadership in helping us try to find an answer that addresses, you know, addresses a task before us. Thank you.
All right. All right, I think we're, I think we're, we're done with this for the evening, but to be continued. And we've got a couple of other items to, to take care of this evening, so let's move on. The next item on our agenda is the resolution establishing the method of interfund borrowing for solid waste capital expenditures, and of course, only Tim Flora could probably be asked to take on that, that topic.
So, I will try to be quick. So, Chairman Newman, commissioners, tonight I bring to you three actions for the solid waste program. Solid waste also being known as the landfill. Just as a reminder, the enterprise, solid waste is an enterprise fund, which mean, it means it is self-sufficient, so it is paid for solely by user fees. The three actions before you, one is to approve a project ordinance, which is a capital project to expand and update the county's transfer station of thirty-five years. And then the other two items are related to the funding of that project. So I will, I can, we can talk about the project if you want to talk about the project. Pretty much, it's just an upgrade, update of the, the land, the transfer station, which has been there for several evil years. So it's, it's worn out, it's time to be replaced and refreshed. And what we would like to do is, because at our board retreat, we talked about one of the reserve funds we have, what we would like to do is self-fund that out of one of our reserve funds, which basically is using the sixteen million dollar pot of money that we have, setting aside to pay for the closure, post-closure cost to close a landfill. We would like to use, we'd like to borrow from that fund and then pay ourselves back over the course of the years. And that is what the resolution is about that you have on the agenda, which is basically a resolution which sort of sets the parameters for us to borrow those funds. Basically, what we want to say is, as we have, depending upon the capacity of the landfill, we are able to borrow a certain amount of money from, from the reserve fund. Basically, what it is, it, what it's, this resolution is sort of also creating a policy moving forward to make sure that when we do borrow from that reserve fund, that it is only going to be for solid waste projects and only specific projects, and that we will always protect the, the integrity of that reserve fund. So basically, how it works is, we've got a landfill right now that, when we built it, it sort of has a capacity of thirty years. Well, because of the innovative processes that we have at the landfill, it, it is, really has a capacity now of forty years. So we know we're not going to need some of those, that, those funds for forty years down the road, so therefore, we think we can borrow those funds to pay for this project and make sure that we have it paid back by the time that we, we would actually need those funds.
Okay, question. So, the, the money is there for us to borrow from?
Yes.
And the amount is, how much?
Eight point two million dollars is what we're asking for the project ordinance.
Okay. So, and that is on the capital plan, too? So when that shows up on the capital plan, you know, I'm thinking, you know, property taxes, I'm thinking that type of debt. So, that gives me a little bit, a little bit of help in looking at the capital plan and hearing this. So, and so this basically says that we will, that, that process is acceptable to the commissioners. We approve that process.
Yes.
But if we do it in the future, you have, you have to come back and we have to approve that amount, too. All we're doing is establishing a process.
So, no, no. We're actually, there are actually three, you have three documents, three actions tonight. One of them will be approving the project ordinance, which is the, which is the project ordinance, creating the project, the eight point two million dollar project, the transfer station. Then we've got a budget amendment, which is basically moving the money from the reserve fund... over to the capital projects fund.
Right.
And then the other is the actual resolution itself, which is saying, this is how we're gonna, moving forward, this is the policy that we have created for how we're going to use these funds to ensure the integrity of that, that reserve fund.
So, I got all that, but, so my, my question was, if we use it again in the future, then you have, we have to approve that amount?
Yes, 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 absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And, and in the resolution, um, those funds can only be used for solid waste projects.
Got it.
Uh, they, they have to come before the board. And there is a sort of a formula inside that resolution, which says we can only borrow, as the capacity of the landfill, um, as the, the landfill fills up, we can only borrow less and less of those reserve funds.
Right, okay. Is there public comment?
Uh, we will have public comment once there's a motion made.
Uh, so how many motions do you have to have?
I'd rather make one motion to approve all three.
I'm gonna make one motion to approve all three, just me.
There's a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, let's open it up to public comment on the motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Yelton?
I don't have to walk up there, I'm loud enough. What is your projected payback rate? I understand what you're doing. You've got the, the money is set aside from the enterprise fund, 'cause the landfill has that much extra money in it, 'cause you're trying to have the post-closure.
So, this would be set up just like a regular financing, it would be 20 years.
What's your projection for payback?
20 years.
20 years?
Well, depends on what we're funding, if it, if it.
Hey, Tim, uh, Tim, speak into the, speak on the mic.
If it is a, if it is a, if it is a building type, it would be 20 years. If we're gonna buy equipment from that fund, it would be like five years.
So, you, you've not decided yet on the project what you're gonna do?
Yeah, well, this, this is just for, just for the transfer station. And so, that, so this is, this will be 20 years, yes. But in the, but, but in the, the resolution itself, it, it, it gives the guidelines for how we would use.
I read that, and I saw that, and I was just trying to figure out what the payback would be with this 80 year.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be 20 years.
20 years.
Yeah. And so, one of the other, one of the benefits from this is that we don't have then those outside debt service charges. So, it, and we would be charging an interest rate on that debt, and the, the landfill would be, or solid waste would be paying back that loan on an annual basis, so.
But the key is in the increase what we put in the landfill.
All right.
We've got a four-year capacity, so.
Any other comments? All right, um, just a motion on the table, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding expansion of the use of the Article 46 1% sales tax. And Dr. Green will present the resolution.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, when we pass Article 46 sales tax, the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution restricting that, the use of that fund or dedicating the use of that fund to AB Tech construction. We are asking you tonight to amend that resolution and help us, um, expand the use of that for AB Tech, and we would expand it to use, uh, to pay for both operations and major maintenance based on the final approval by this board for every project that, I mean, for all expenditures that are brought forward. I'll talk to Dr. King about it. He's very supportive of, of this expansion moving forward, and, um, we're just asking you, that you give us, and our, give the county and the, the college both the ability to look at this in a broader way.
All right, thank you. Uh, are there questions or a motion?
I've got some question.
Okay.
Well, it's not a question. I'd like to have an add to it. There's a lot of things on it that I was told, again, we have used money for major maintenance already in the project. Major maintenance, I've been over there and I'm part of the board, I can see that. The one thing that I'd like to add in, to it is, the Board of Commissioners encourages AB Tech to use former General Service Director Greg Israel to oversee construction and evaluate every facility to determine the major maintenance issues at the college. He has full control. The college needs to actually pay him, and I would like to see that in a three-year contract, Mr. Israel.
So, I'd like to make a comment on that. Commissioner Frye, so I think that, um, I think I'm in agreement with you about what you're talking about. I think, you know, one of the things that we, um, as we've been looking at the AB Tech campus, uh, I think we've all realized, and I think AB Tech has as well, that they need to really, we need a great, we need to really get a high-quality assessment of all the buildings there, so we make sure we're taking care of the buildings that are there.
Right.
So, I'm in, I'm in agreement with you. Just from a procedural standpoint, I kinda feel like that's almost kind of like a separate item. This, you know, this sales tax thing is, is kind of a long-term policy. So, I guess I'd kinda like to suggest we do what you're suggesting, that we do it. I don't know if it makes sense to attach it to this sales tax, you know, um, policy that we're talking about here, so.
Only thing I wanted to say in there, Brownie, is in the sale tax, the sales tax will be paying, Mr. Israel, out of the quarter cent sales tax to, for the 30-year period to try to make this work.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I don't know, maybe there's no reason that it couldn't be done. It just seems like these are sort of apples and oranges kinda, kind of, uh, things, but I'm in agreement with what you're suggesting, so.
So, you.
I can't hear.
Get that?
Could we get that? Could you, you wanna repeat that, please?
Repeat it, Alan, I didn't bring it up. If, if we can vote on that separately, but have it on, um, on the agenda for the 20th, it can crash all agreement with Greg to oversee, um, the maintenance and future construction needs?
Cause I'm, I'm supportive of that, too.
I, I like the recommendation that let's, let's take this, let's put, I think this is gonna be a consensus item to encourage AB Tech to do a full assessment of all the buildings, make sure we're taking care of them. And Greg, if he's willing to do this, would be a great person to do it, I think we all know that. Let's put it on the, let's put it on probably the consent agenda at our next meeting to take care of this suggestion. Can you, um, can you accept that?
Sure.
Great.
We'll have that ready on the consent agenda.
Um, any other, um, any other discussion, or is there a motion on the resolution?
I mean, I just have a comment. I think that the, this, uh, this addition for major maintenance, long-term, will protect the investment that the, that the, the sales tax was set up for in the first place. And so, I, uh, I'm happy to make a, make a motion to, uh, to approve it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Presley. Motion, a second, further discussion. We will open this up for public comment, so we'll do that now.
What was voted on was the tax increase for construction, so now we're changing that tax. And I questioned the validity of that. Furthermore, I think you should have a time limit on this, that it comes back before this commission, because I'm reminded of something Jerry Rice said many, 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 many years ago. He said, "You're building all these schools, but you're forgetting something. You build a building, you're gonna have to maintain it. So, where's all the help gonna come from maintaining it?" And I think in the interest of sustainability and self-sufficiency, doesn't AB Tech have courses in maintenance and repair? Don't they have courses in anything like that? If they don't, maybe they should be looking at starting a course. Do they have a course in how to clean a bathroom? How many of you folks have gone into bathrooms lately and looked at the floor and the tiles? We're using foreign labor in most of those jobs, and they don't know what clean is. The grout in the tile is filthy, so maybe they oughta start a course in housekeeping and maintenance. Would that not be beneficial with all these apartment buildings we're building and all these hotels and motels we're building? So, I think you need to, in your own personal relationship with that board, Mike, if you're still on the board, I don't know. And I think you, as commissioners, should start pushing for AB Tech to do that, because they should be providing this service while they're training students to do it, so that since we are gonna be a tourist Mecca, we're gonna have to have a lot of laborers. And you know, nobody wants to do that work. And when nobody wants to do it, guess why? You start paying more and more and more. And you need to go out and talk to some of these hotel and motel operators and ask them what they would pay to have a real smart, sharp maintenance man and good cleaning crews that would keep their hotel and motel rooms spotless. I guarantee you would find you wouldn't have a problem getting $12 an hour or $15 an hour, and probably $25 and $30 an hour for that, if they produce. So, I would like to see something other than just passing this and letting this 20, this quarter percent go on forever and ever and ever, funding, not construction, 'cause that is a violation of the resolution that was passed and what we voted on as citizens. And I will be watching that and check the legality of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've not heard anyone bring up the amount of money tonight related to how much money that we voted on, how much we've spent on the buildings, and how much we got left, and is that what we're talking about using to do whatever? Where's this money coming from? Is this new money, or is this the bond money that we voted on? That's the bond money? Now, Mr. Frye, I thought you said that we'd already overspent that money. Well, how close are we?
We're honestly not there yet.
Okay. My, my point here is, if we're not there yet, we, the public here don't know how much that is, but here you're voting on a resolution to do something and add stuff to it, and we don't know what you're talking about. It'd be good to know what you're talking about before you bring it up to vote on it. You certainly ain't educating us back here. So, before you vote on it, how about giving the public a chance to understand what you're doing? You're into smart people, but I can't tell that if you don't talk, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
The way I was looking at this is, we have went and looked at buildings, Mr. Presley, Mr. Presley and myself went over there and looked at some stuff the other day that needs fixed. If we don't fix it, then that means another building. And I agree, Don, and I agree, both of you, it's very much so, that the problem is, we have a college that you wouldn't believe. There's things that's happened at, over at that college that needs to be taken care of. We build new buildings, we tear buildings down. There's buildings that need to be tore down, and the people want new buildings. We're, and we're close on money, but the one thing, one way I looked at this picture, the money that we borrow, uh, Dr. Green, isn't it like a 20-year deal on the 46 deal? But the way I was gonna look at it, probably next week or the week after, uh, in the process, is we have money that's going in, it's all Article 46 money. And if we can do these projects without going and borrowing money, that's what I'd like to see tried to be done and still make our 20-year debt deal, because it's gonna be around, and you can't overdo the debt, and the money's gonna build up in, in that fund. So, if we can even save enough money to say to put, they wanna build in, we can, we can do a building. But it, I wanna, honestly wanna try to get it as pay as you go. That's what I'd like to see, and, and where we're at, too. But the main thing is, we have to get somebody that has some control of this particular.
I think it's cut me off.
She hits a button on these, right? That's all right. But anyway, yeah, that's, that's where I'm at, and, and we still do have some money. You know, we got basically 20 some million dollars that we can save, but there's, there's a lot of stuff, and if we put the right person in place, that can save us money, like he did the top floor over here, uh, through his maintenance people. There was 4 million, uh, if we went outside, and he did it for a million and three, so. Uh, he's creative in the way that he gets stuff done, and that's, that's why my suggestion is, put him in place so that we can save every nickel we can save, and, you know, and I think the job would be well done.
So, so just real quick, and we got a motion on the floor?
Yep.
Okay. Um, just real quick, for the, for the sake of clarity, for those out there, you know, part of this says that the Board of Commissioners have asked AB Tech Community College Board of Trustees to evaluate and needs each structure on the campus, provide a comprehensive facility plan, recognizing that such plan will take several months of repair, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, I wanna thank the board for their stewardship in, in looking at this and, and making sure that we meet the needs of AB Tech, and that we meet it in a, in a very practical way. And because we have noticed there was concerns regarding major maintenance, this takes that off the table, allows it to be able to be, be fixed and not come into us every year asking for X number of dollars to, to do that. It's, it's just a very clear way, and there's a, it's, it's spelled out very, very well in here, so, but.
I have one question. Dr. Green, how much money do we have?
I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me. We, we committed to spend, and my, uh, Commissioner Frye would know this better than me, but in the fourth, whereas, we talk about all the things that we have spent the money on so far, so it's very clear where we spent the money. It generates, um, about $12 million a year, and when it was passed, it was passed as a yes or no, are you for the tax? The way you determined what you would spend it on was this resolution we're asking you to, uh, address tonight. And we are having discussions about what are the needs, but we also need to know the state of the facilities. I think we're still several, I mean, many million dollars short of having spent what the original list said, and prices have gone up since then, but, um, it does clarify very clearly in the, the fourth whereas, how we spent the money so far. And we do track that, and if we were to, uh, want to do another building or something that came up, we would come back to you with a clear path that says how you can, uh, pay for that with that fund. Did that answer your question? Thank you.
All right, great. So, we've got a motion, a second. Uh, any other questions? Let's vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Green. All right, the final item under new business is a resolution to issue an RFP on the solar project on the retired county landfill. So, um, I guess I'll just make a couple of remarks, and I'll ask John if he would like to, uh, share any additional details on this. So, uh, we had the solar project on the county commission agenda at the last meeting, and, um, you know, and some questions and concerns were raised about, you know, the process that we're using, and, um, uh, and there was support expressed for making sure there's an opportunity for any company that would wanna put a proposal in front of us for this, uh, project would have an opportunity to do so. So, that's basically what this RFP would do. So, um, this would invite any, any company that has an interest in partnering with the county on this to send us their qualifications and experience and, um, and talk about the approach they would take to working with the county on this project. Basically, with the approach that, as we've described all along, that we're looking for a partner to basically handle the development process, as well as the financial costs of that, as well as then actually installing and operating the system. So, that's what we're asking folks to do, and, uh, John, would you like to add any comments to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've covered it. Obviously, we're looking for, we need to study to determine how many acres they're gonna use, uh, the megawatts that will be generated, and the substation down at MSD, it has a capacity, and, okay, so that will limit whatever the size of the, the output of the solar farm is. And then it's, it's like the chairman said, I mean, we're looking for qualifications. I mean, you guys have experience in doing this, have you ever done one on a landfill? Have you ever done a, a solar farm in, in North Carolina, gone to the Utilities Commission here? And the people that, that are in charge of that firm, you know, what's their experience, and who's gonna be working on our project, just like we would for an architect or an, an engineer? So, uh, I think that's, that's kind of the direction that we're heading, and, you know, obviously, we're looking at their, their financing, their debt capacity, those kind of things, so.
So, is Duke Power gonna still be a partner in this discussion, and it, sorry? So, is Duke Power still gonna be a partner in this discussion if we don't like the RFPs that come back? You know, is that gonna, you know, we gonna go back to where we were before?
So, we'll open this up to public comment in a minute, and Jason, if you'd like to add or, or correct anything I say. But I think what Duke has said to us is that they encourage the county to do this, 'cause they want everyone to feel good about the process. I think the commission's unanimously supported the idea, but we all wanna feel good about how we get to that, to the, to the, the project being done. to the, to the, to the, the project being done. So, Duke is encouraging us to do this, and, but has also said that the proposal they have put forward to the county, that proposal still stands, and they would, they're prepared to, to act on that, and if we do continue to, if we ultimately decide to move forward with Duke as our, as our partner.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the issuance of the solar RFP.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We will, we're gonna vote on this. I'll go ahead and open it up for any public comment.
I'm sorry.
You're fine, man.
Bet you since I talked about South Carolina the last time you brought it up.
I want to congratulate you and Duke, too, for doing a resolution, asking for people to put a proposal in. The only question I would have is, how long are you gonna have that proposal out, and how are you gonna recruit people to, to bid on it? Because I don't think anybody can probably touch Duke on this deal, because they've already probably looked at it and know it's viable. But, you know, so that the public feels good, at least get somebody else to submit one, and then you can compare apples to apples. And if they don't spell out what Duke does in their detailed proposal about some of the questions that I ask in the paperwork that I handed you, how long is it gonna last? What are you gonna do when you have to tear the panels down? How are you gonna maintain the condition of the grass at the landfill? Those types of questions should be considered in your proposal. And you probably don't want it, but I'd be more than glad to help you evaluate the proposal if there's any questions that you failed to miss, because I do have a background in environmental systems engineering. And I meant what I said about that billboard put there so low on the ground, they can't mow underneath it and have to use a weed eater with a man bent over. So, common sense sometimes replaces an engineer, and Roberts, you know that. You can design a car by the book, but you have to make final touches when you get in that sucker and start driving it, don't you? Thank you very much. Glad to see you do this, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Me and old Don, it don't cost you nothing to get advice from us. You know, we're good consultants, you know. My, my concern here is, all of a sudden, here come Duke and the big boys, you know. I think Brownie brought them in. And it, this big project come up, didn't have a clue on your mind what the heck was going on till it was, you know, till we started asking questions back here, and then you started digging. My concern is, is this the only thing that's, you even thinking about putting on this landfill? Or even projected out to people and say, are there anything else out there that might be more viable, money-wise? To me, I, I don't understand just throwing this one project out there with that many acres of land. And, you know, if you can put a ball field at Inca out there on a landfill, want in the name of God, can't you do that? And it brings in a lot more revenue than what you're talking about with Duke. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
You got it. Now, Joe grunted, but yes. It brings in a lot more revenue, because it's done been projected out at Inca, and that's a little old place out there compared to what you got down there. Now, think about it. Are you really doing it for the best use of that land? You got it.
Jason?
Jason, well, I can't sit here this long and not just get up and, and just kind of confirm or, or affirm that the chairman is correct, that, you know, in the letter, I hope all of you were able to read the letter that, that we shared a few days after the last meeting, where at the last meeting, we were coming with an expectation of celebrating and excitement, and we quickly realized that there were still some questions that folks had about the process and how we had gotten there. The company was not brought in by the chairman. We actually submitted an unsolicited bid, because we saw an opportunity to be a partner with a community that we care about. And so, we submitted us an unsolicited bid in this process, and as things started to unfold, we realized that the smart and the right thing to do is to continue to encourage each other, to kind of take a step back, to submit a, an RFP, to actually have people respond to that, so that we can all, if we do decide to work together in partnership, celebrate that investment and that partnership in the community together. And so, what we've offered, and what we've offered in, in terms of partnership, is still good. But if you get a, a better deal, that you feel that is in the better interest of the, the citizens in which you represent, me being one of them, as a resident of Buncombe County, then, then please go forward. But our, our offer and what we have offered the counties is still good after this process.
Great. Thanks very much. Any other questions or discussion?
No, I'd just like to thank Jason for stepping up and doing this. And I guess we, as a board, need to try to pick the amount of time that we want to put it up.
It's, it's on there.
It's August, August, we're asking for information to be sent in by August first.
Did you hear that, Don? August first, deadline.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Jason, for staying through all four and a half hours of this meeting so far. And...
And we got a conversation.
We are through with the new business items. We have a vacancy on the planning board. We've got one vacancy, and there's four applicants. We have, we have advert, this is for the, this is for the Reynolds District position on the board. We've filled this in the, in the last couple of years, and now there's another vacancy. What's the, any comments on this vacancy?
Set up interviews for before the next meeting, but I'd close the applications process, since we've got four.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll interview these four, and we'll plan on doing that before the next meeting?
June twentieth.
Do, in addition to the, well, okay, that sounds, that sounds good. We'll do that. All right, the next meeting of the Buncombe County Commission is on June twentieth at 5:00 PM at 326, room 326, 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. We do have a closed session this evening. I'm aware that we're going to be potentially addressing three different topics. One is an economic development project. The second is a personal consideration that is related to the search process, looking for the county, a new county manager. And the third is a, regarding a legal item. So, those are the three items, so those are the three topics or reasons for going into closed session. Is there a motion from a commissioner to go into closed session?
So moved.
All right, there's a motion and a second to go into closed session. We expect to reconvene this evening, but to take no action on any of these items tonight. So, we'll leave it at that, based on what we know today, right at this moment. We'll go, we'll go from there. All right, so, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going into closed session. We'll be back.